It's it's um it's a pin zero. It's or the do me. Yeah. Zero. That's me. Are you? Oh, elephants. Oh. It's the news.
This is important one. This I can not. For. But that's the. Work with.
I knew.
You know.
We get. What you like? Well, it could be killed. You're down to seven. A bowl sphere. Been ready for you. Yeah. It's. Do. Yeah. And. I know. Yes. We didn't send them all. All you got is we're not sure what the zero. Such birds.
Oh, you really do have pizza. I thought you were just joking with me, Curtis. Geez. Didn't even have to stay home to get pizza.
Yeah, that's why I had to for sure call that out. So you knew that we're having pizza here.
All right. Well, this kind of changes things. I thought I was getting a deal by getting pizza from home, but you guys ordered in and everything. Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, missing out.
Yep. Is that that place there on uh on the main drag?
Yes, yep.
Cool.
Be knows.
Yeah, it was good. It was really good.
That's good. Kyle and I ate there after one of our meetings here a month or two ago.
It was a few months ago now.
Yeah, it was still kind of light out.
Yeah.
It was in the fall. I guess.
Yeah, you've got the barbecue chicken, I believe.
Mm hmm.
I like the Uncle Soli solely myself.
Yeah.
Yeah, the Uncle Sully and the Buffalo Chicken are my favorites.
Okay.
Yeah, that's where we got Buffalo Chicken.
Was it Buffalo? It might have been. Yeah, Buffalo. Because I remember because I was in um I was in a particular mood like that whole week before uh that I wanted like a buffalo chicken or a barbecue chicken or something that had like not just marinara base. Like I wanted like a full and they and they had that and I was it was delicious.
There you go.
Yeah. I did bring some. Yeah, that's awesome. Yeah, thank you.
I got got a new chair today, Curtis.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, my other one uh.
Yeah.
Finally got it replaced. It was uh pretty rickety, not uh was not having a good time balancing like a like a top on that thing.
Yeah, I had to uh go to the office and get my chair, so because I just didn't have a good enough chair at home.
You're stealing Kimley Horn office furniture now, Curtis. Where where's the report button? Where's that?
I'll give it back.
Tell us about this chair. Did you do a lot of research on it? What was it about?
I did uh did a good amount of research. I was I didn't remember chairs being this expensive last time I bought one, but I think last time I didn't care. I was buying a Walmart chair or something. Man, I could not find anything for like under a hundred and fifty bucks and it easily quickly reached into the four and five hundreds and I was like
Wow.
I don't know if I'm ready for that kind of commitment. But yeah, it's just uh I don't even remember the brand. GT racer, the ace. It's like a it's like a race car uh.
Are you doing competitive racing in that office chair or what?
I did. Uh, watch this. You want to talk about competitive racing? Wow. It has one hundred and eighty degree. I can literally sleep up here and my first time I did that, my wife said, okay, sleep up there. If you if you stay up.
It's like I've had enough anyway.
Yeah, if you stay up past two, then just sleep in your chair. So pulling my arm, but maybe.
Zero gravity office chair with four point harness.
Yeah. Yeah, I actually just I just need a hammock in here. Actually, that's what that's what's missing.
You're telling me that chair doesn't link up to become a hammock?
I bet you I could make you do it. You got ripped off.
That's the four hundred dollar edition.
Yeah, that was. It was the upgrade. Yep. Yeah, there was some with like feet rest and headphones and I don't know NASA memory foam apparently. Some of them made out of mink fur making cost so much.
Since we are getting together, we'll call this meeting to order. Actually, this is a study session. So I think we can go some of the things however what we'll do if we could. Um, I will say this is this is Albert County Planning Commission Study Session. It is February second and the time is seven thirteen. So we'll call our meeting door, but if we could, could we stand and say a quick prayer and a pledge? Do we have a flag? Good. It could. But allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could you could you say it quick? Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me so love. Where there is injury, pardon me. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. And where there is sadness, joy. Return to you now, seeking your continued blessings on those of us who have chosen public service as well as those who are with us tonight in person or through Zoom to join us in our deliberations and decision making. We ask that we give all of us patience and a commitment to respect and to listen to each other. For the members of this commission, help us always be mindful that we are public servants. Help us to hear with our hearts and to think clearly and reasonably. Help us to have a vision to look at the issues before us with wisdom and a determination to do what is best, even if it's not easy. Guide us in also we do to work for the common good. Tonight, we also ask your blessings on our courageous first responders as well as on those who seek their help. We ask your blessings on all those who support and contribute to the work of this mission, knowing that without their diligent efforts, our work here would not be possible. We pray all these things in the name of Jesus as holy as holy. Amen. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I think do we need a roll call tonight, Christina, or since it's that if we do so we at least know who's here if we could. Because we do have two people to introduce tonight also.
Hey Danny, before we get started, can you please mute yourself and use the house microphone? I think we're getting some feedback.
Okay, so I'm coming up here just because I have another mic over there. Danny Will Cox.
Here.
Van Sands. Linda Krausert. Peter Hogan Dyke. He just stepped away. Dan Mahalik. Jason Vermillion. Jason's one of our newest planning commissioners. Justin Clausen. Jeff Franken. And Roger Burton is our other new planning commissioner. Danny, I don't know if you wanted to introduce them and have them talk.
I do. I do. So we have Jason Vermillion and Roger Burton. Okay, correct?
Correct.
All right, remind me District Three and Appointment Four, Kit Parker, who who just recently left. And you're District Two. District One appointed Chris Richardson. Hi, Chris. Okay. You guys, thank you very much. We really appreciate it. We needed people. We appreciate you stepping forward and getting into this. Um, once we go through this, I might ask what I what I'll do is I'll I'll see if we can go over some things and if you have questions as to, you know, the process, what were you doing or when you receive things, stuff like that. I think we'll try to cover some of that tonight, but kind of go through what we go through, what we do, what our primary goal is, what we're trying to accomplish. So I think after our presentation, I'll see if we can go through that to kind of bring you up to speed. Okay, did that help? Or have you had a chance to speak with anybody or? No, okay. So be a good time to do it.
So Dan's going to get on.
Okay.
He didn't get any notice about the meeting. I didn't see a notice about the meeting either. That's why I asked. And I said, did he email? So you might call Justin. Is it? Or Linda?
I thought these emails went on.
I know. I didn't see an email on it. I asked about it because we talked about it last time at the meeting. That's how I knew it.
I'll give Justin a quick phone call here.
Okay. Well, shall we hang on a second? See if we can contact them?
I'd say keep going. We'll we'll catch up here.
Well, I mean, it wasn't an actual. But actually. So Dan didn't see an other side. That's why I sent you an email and asked you. Because I I hadn't seen I had seen a blanked email going out to everybody about meetings. Yeah, but I don't go look at City Clerk all the time. You know, if I know there's a meeting and I have there's something there I need to look at, I'll go look at it. Actually, I've never had to log into City Clerk. I just open it and go to it.
Right there. It's it's right there online.
Yeah. I mean, I don't have to because I'm signing into it. So if you're sending out emails to the City Clerk, I would never get one. I'd never have to log in to do it.
Okay. So where do we want to do the presentation first? Okay, because what we're at here, this is a study session. This isn't a normal meeting. This is what all we're going to do. One, we're going to review the the updated travel transportation plan total, which covers all of Albert County. I think this plan was different than the first one because the first one was the Western Albert County Transportation Plan. Now, this one is is nearing completion and it it addresses the whole county. And and we're about what we're we're months into it now. So and we've got a group here to present. So I think that that's what we'll start with.
But thank you, members of the Planning Commission. Definitely appreciate your time and happy to be here to present where we are currently in the transportation master plan. As mentioned, we began this approximately six months ago, so we're fairly far in. We have a couple of months left in the process and so we're here tonight to get your feedback and input relative to the plan. And obviously, a couple of you are recognized. So you were part of our tack meetings and so we appreciate the input that you've provided to us in the past. And then for those that this the first time seeing it, we really appreciate any comments or input that you have.
Okay.
So I'm Curtis Rowe with Kimley Horn. We are the consulting firm hired by Albert County to prepare this transportation master plan on your behalf. And I there are two other members of my team that are on the call. They're going to run the slides for the computer and give the presentation. And so I'll allow them to introduce themselves. Kyle.
Sure. Yeah. Uh, so I'm Kyle McLaughlin. I'm down here in Colorado Springs, so not too far, but um like I said earlier, was got some pizza here at home, so I didn't expect, you know, the trade off. But yeah, I focus on transportation, uh, planning, long range planning and um yeah, been been working on this primarily over the last six or seven months.
And my name is Chris Juanes. I'm also a transportation planner with Kimley Horn. Um, and I'm helping Kyle here kind of pull all the all the pieces of this plan together and uh make sure that we have all the feedback included that you guys provide to us tonight.
I'm going to try to share my screen. Let me know what you see.
Yep, we can see it.
What do you see right now?
We see we are here.
Okay, great. I'm I don't have any indication as to the fact that I chose my the right screen, but okay, good. So yeah, like like Curtis said, uh, we started in July, got um those proceed and kind of worked our way through uh the the second half of of twenty twenty. Um, you know, getting along with COVID as well as anybody else. Um, we worked through the mobility assessment, which I'll kind of give a quick run through. I know that a few of you have been, you know, more involved than others. Um, figured it'd be a good time to just give a quick five minute rundown of of that mobility audit. Um, and then we we started to work our way into the goals, priorities, um, some some demand forecasting. And then uh here in the last month or so, we really dug into what projects we want to tackle over the next twenty years throughout the county, uh, as well as how are we wanting to prioritize those projects? So we'll kind of cover all of that uh tonight, right? Quick, quick over the first few and then really kind of more detail and more conversation on the the projects themselves and and prioritization kind of framework. So the the mobility assessment is really just a um a summary of, you know, the snapshot in time for Albert County. So what, you know, what have we done? What plans have we previously produced? Uh, what projects that they talk about? What are the goals from those previous plans and and trying to make sure we have everything that we can kind of mesh together? Then from there, we we started to dive into the the county demographics, um, some different transportation uh metrics such as traffic, uh, crash histories. And just the just the typical snapshot in time, as well as we took a look at the surrounding counties and Dr. Cog to try to make sure we have an understanding of kind of where they're at as far as investments they're making or plans they have that may kind of touch the sides of of Albert County. And went through all that. And at the end of that, we we came out with this this mobility audit and we followed it up with a survey. Um, I'm not sure if everybody if anybody was able to fill out that survey, but that was in um roughly November-ish, October, November. And we we asked people um to provide their feedback on goals for the transportation system. We asked some uh this or that type questions on how the how they believe the county should prioritize their their funding and uh really how how they believe the future transportation system should be handled. And then we asked people for some specific points, uh, strengths and weaknesses and uh projects really that we we think or that they think we should um keep in mind as we look to to developing the plan.
And we we got really good participation. Yep.
Yeah, we got uh over three hundred and fifty participants, five hundred twenty five comments of some four thousand data points. So um, it was middle of October through the end of October. So yeah, it was it was really good turnout. Um, always glad to see several hundred people responding to a survey. We uh found out from from that survey results that, you know, maintenance and safety were were two huge priorities for most people in the county. Um, several hundred people for each one of those said that that was their, you know, their number one or or number two priority. Um, and kind of worked our way down through, you know, making sure or seeing what what people thought for uh how important growth is, efficiency, resiliency, integration of land use and transportation, and then the connectivity and choices of the network throughout the county. So this is all just, and this should be available on, on the website. I'm just going through the summary that we kind of put out. I'll, I'll, I'll take a snapshot here. So one of the questions that we asked for trade offs is if the county had the same amount of money to spend, should they focus on travel inside the county or outside the county? And seven, you know, it just over, just over half of people said that they would like it to be within the county. So, um, yeah. And I'll kind of zip down through the bottom of this audit.
So this process was part of the existing conditions assessment?
It was.
You know, we did the analysis and evaluation of all the existing conditions. As Kyle mentioned, the traffic counts, the accident data, the crash data. And the survey also, because we were asking the county residents for their opinions related to the existing infrastructure.
Yep, exactly. Yeah. And then that all culminated into some transportation opportunities and constraints. You know, a number of opportunities and constraints that we believe, you know, kind of came out of all that data and that, and those survey responses. So we, we then took that, took all that information and tried to start compiling projects. So like I said before, what, what projects were identified in the CIP? What projects were identified in the previous Transportation Master Plan? What projects were identified by people through the survey? And kind of came out with, with this map. We've got over a hundred projects here throughout the county. And the coloring here is the type of project that was suggested or that was previously suggested. I'll zoom in a little bit here. So as you can see, you know, a couple of projects here and there, like, like this and like these that, that are just, you know, connections that making, making the, the network stronger. There's some, some paving projects throughout the county. There's some safety projects. These, these dots over here are bridge projects. And then some just general improvement projects to either dirt roads or paved roads. So pretty good spread of projects throughout the, throughout the county. You know, it, we were, we were glad to see, you know, kind of input from around the county. And we, once we, once we came out and had this list, well, the next obvious question is, okay, so how do we, how do we prioritize it? And, and what do we do to make all of this happen? How do we, how do we make sure that we're, we're giving proper due to any given project? So we worked with county staff and, you know, a few important stakeholders to come up with. I believe everybody should have had the project prioritization metrics in a, in a packet if, if it was handed out. But this essentially is, okay, great. So this is essentially seven categories, seven different buckets of metrics to, to be tracked or to be considered when prioritizing these projects. Everything from the, the safety, how safe the, the roadway has been historically, putting weight into, you know, if there's a fatal crash or an injury crash, those are more important to make sure we, we fix. Operational efficiency, so functional classification, number of roadway connections that will be made by the improvement. And then the volume now and in the future of that roadway. Preservation and resiliency, so the flooding issues, high maintenance, you know, poor subgrade and pavement and bridge condition data. And then the last three categories were system development, which is, you know, making sure that we are making those connections, making sure that the, the dirt roads, the unpaved services are still low enough volume to be unpaved. Making sure that the school bus, snow routes, truck routes are all appropriately maintained and we, and we give them their proper inspection. Economic and multi-modal development was, we went through and looked at, make sure that the, the roadways that are within a major growth area, kind of as defined by the comprehensive plan, making sure that any area we expect to see grow, whether it's on the eastern side of the county or just one of the, you know, western side, making sure that we understand, you know, pockets of development here and there. And, and if, if the roadway serves a school or a park and then kind of a, a secondary element is as we define the project, does, does that project include a bike or pedestrian element? So those, those are all the kind of statistical type pieces that we are including on, on this prioritization. And then the last bucket here is kind of the, the public input. So we, we want to give some weight to what people believe is important, right? So we're, we're planning on doing another survey for all of these projects and asking the public kind of their, their input on any given project. The, the technical committee has already seen all these. We, we went through and we talked through a lot of the projects. And they have, they've been, they've had their opportunity over the last couple of weeks to provide comments and, and their reactions to those projects as well.
So, yeah, so, yep, no, that's great, Kyle. So each of those projects that were in that map went through this category listing. And so we evaluated each one to see whether or not it had safety issues and so applied a weighting to it. And so that whole list of factors that Kyle just went through, that was our methodology in prioritizing. So we could see if there was an operational efficiency, if there was a need for that roadway due to resiliency. And so, you know, with known flooding issues, if there is known flooding issues on that roadway, then that increased its prioritization. And so it was a way to rank them all against each other by using these factors.
Absolutely. Kyle, do you have that spreadsheet up so we can?
I, I do. Yep. Yeah, that's be a good time. It's gonna be somewhat hard to see, but yeah.
Yeah. So actually, can you go to the weighting tab?
Sure.
And so each of those categories, we actually included a different weight to those because not all of those are created equal, right? We saw from the public survey results that safety and preservation and resiliency are more important than a lot of those other goals that go into the prioritization here. So if you can, Kyle, if you flip back to the spreadsheet, oh, there we go, second page there. So this shows how those different buckets of metrics relate to the goals that were in the public survey. And then the different weights that we assigned to each of those. And we made a differentiation because they're kind of two distinct types of areas and types of development that is being served in the county. So the western portion of the county is urbanizing and the eastern part is still very rural. And so we actually drew a line that kind of more or less follows Comanche Creek, kind of north, south through the entire county and said, all right, anything on the west side of that line is in this urbanizing area. Everything on the east side is in the rural area. And so the, the urbanizing side, it's kind of more of a spread between those different goals because you have to weigh things like the operational efficiency a lot more than you would have to in the rural area where there aren't a lot of congestion problems or anything like that. And so safety and maintenance really came out as very heavily weighted in that rural side of the county because those are really the two main issues that would need to be addressed over there. And what this does is allow projects in the rural side to not get kind of overlooked in this prioritization process because, you know, they may not speak to these congestion problems or making additional connections that are more important on the western side of the county to make sure that we have a better spread of our prioritization across all districts in the county.
Yeah, kind of normal, normalizes what is important on the two sides of the county.
Yep. And so if you flip back into the spreadsheet, this tool, and you can go to the prioritization tab, Kyle. So this includes all of those metrics and this is the actual physical data that we put into the spreadsheet tool. And what we'll do at the end of this project is actually hand this over to county staff and give them a little training session on how to use this. So that this is something you can keep using as you collect more traffic counts, say, or some other data points like bridge inspections or if something changes like a snow route, you can go in and update this data and see how it affects your prioritization score. You can also, as new projects emerge on your kind of list of projects and, and priorities change and that sort of thing, you can go ahead and add new projects in and just enter each one of these data points and see how that falls compared to the other scores. And you can see all the way on the right hand side there of the spreadsheet is that final prioritization score all the way on the right, Kyle.
Did it freeze?
The final score and then the final priority level. It was just lagging a bit.
Oh, okay, okay.
And so the map that Kyle has up is kind of the result of this prioritization spreadsheet. Once he flips back over. And we can see kind of how all each of those projects panned out here. So the purple ones are the highest scoring ones and that tealish color are the lowest scoring ones. And you can see there's kind of a good spread throughout the county of high and, and low priority projects. And that kind of tells us that we think we got our prioritization at a macro level about right, that we're not favoring one type of project or one area of the county more than others. But the reason we're here is to make sure that there's things in the specifics that you guys have insight on, anything when you take a glance at these projects that looks off. If you have questions about why anything scores higher than anything else, we're more than happy to talk through that. And hopefully we can get a, a little bit more refinement out of tonight's meeting on this prioritization exercise.
Yeah. And one final thing I'll say before we really get into just, just talking about this is that the, the other type of project that's, that's identified here is this, this dashed line. These are projects that are in the current CIP. And we, we really wanted to kind of make sure we were careful on if we were suggesting any changes to those. We need to remember that those are things we've already kind of promised in one way or another to people. We want to make sure that somebody's not planning a, you know, a development or, or not, you know, planning on some kind of investment or just planning on their workday to drive to be better in the next couple of years. And we kind of pull that rug out from underneath them. So we want to make sure we, we, we stay as true as we can to keeping these on the next, you know, first tier, quote unquote. But then the ultimate goal here is after that, we'll have a number of tiered project lists that like say, okay, the five years after this CIP kind of lapses, these are the projects that, you know, at this snapshot, these are the projects that is identified as, you know, most important. But we also need to keep in mind that this is just a tool. This is not the end all be all. It doesn't tell county, you know, staff that you must do this improvement. It's, it's more just a, a data driven fact that like, here is a, a highly prioritized project. Now, this project may cost way too much for you to be able to afford in this time period. Or maybe this project lines up well with some surrounding projects, so we want to get that first. There's obviously all those more subjective and more kind of critical thought decisions that are made. But this is the, this is the outcome of, of the data portion of the prioritization.
And we also have one more map in your materials there which show the type of project. So that's what that other map illustrates there on the screen.
Yeah, so the, in your, in your packet is not the prioritized projects. Rather, it's just the type of project.
We have them both. We have them both.
Oh, you do have both? Okay. Okay, great, great. Cool, okay.
Christina came through.
Great. All right, well, with that, I don't have much more if we want to.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we've, we've done enough talking. So if you guys, after looking through these, have anything you'd like to, to discuss with us, we'd be more than happy to, to listen and, and look through the info we have here.
So yeah, this is a good time to ask any questions about even what we covered in the process, but also just looking at the results of this map. You know, if there's something that looks like it's missing, say, what about this or this road? We can dive in further. If there's something on this map that surprises you, you know, we're interested in that feedback as well.
Your citizen involvement in this, that's coming up. You said you've got more, you've got another survey going out, you stated. And then what's the other step there's?
So, yep, in terms of the public surveys, so we did the first survey, which was the existing conditions assessment, which actually kind of, which helped develop these lists of projects because they identified needs through that response. And so then the additional public survey request is to actually evaluate this material as well.
Okay.
Yes, I think Kyle, you had the, the one we gave to the TAC up. And we're actually with your blessing tonight, going to roll out something that looks almost exactly the same for the public as, as soon as tomorrow. And so what we've put together is this online application where people click on a link. It'll take them to this web map. And what we have are the projects symbolized by type, very similar to that map that's in your project or your packet. And people are able to click on each of the projects. It'll zoom them into that location. You'll see on the right, it gives them a little description of, of what the project is, the limits of the project. And then people are able to use the little heart button to like it or the little kind of thought bubble button to leave a comment if they wish. And so we'll put this up for several weeks for people to be able to go in and actually tell us what projects they like, which ones they don't, if they have any suggested changes. And then we'll use this feedback and it, this and the, the TAC version that we're looking at here actually both feed back into that prioritization spreadsheet as well and, and give a little bit more weight to projects that are popular than those that aren't. So that's our, our plan for the next round of public engagement here.
Yeah, so this, this last piece is, is this last, you know, 10% of the prioritization weighting from this spreadsheet. So, yeah, like Chris said, we're kind of want to make sure that all these projects, you know, kind of pass the, the smell test essentially from your perspective and kind of give the, give the, the go ahead to, to release it to the, to the public. And, and we'll keep asking the TAC, keep reminding the TAC to, to give us any responses that they want to at the same time. But yeah, we'll, we'll, that'll be the next phase of, of engagement.
One of the things that was brought up when we were talking about the 178 going through, a lot of people were talking about 1721 going from the golf course up around to 186 where 17 comes in and paving that. I was wondering what your input on that?
So are you talking this, this road specifically or the, the 1721? My apologies.
Yep, 1721 goes up past the golf course and at the north end of the golf course, the 174 comes into 1721. From there, it's dirt all the way up to the top of 186 and around to 17. So that's something that was brought up a lot, where people wanted to see that paved. So I, you know, I was just wondering, that doesn't even show up on your. now that doesn't even show up on your map there. So it's just questioning.
Okay. Yeah. Great. That's a uh, great, great one. We'll uh, we'll we'll throw it, we'll ask, uh, we'll circle back with like Kyrie and Monty and Roy and ask him about, about that uh, project specifically. Um, so.
Yep. And I got marked for location. So.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Yep. Thanks to Roger.
Good. Great. Great first start.
Thank you.
Uh, what else? Any, uh, anything else? Any other projects that, that you don't see on here that you expected?
To interact with the towns. How much interaction have we had with towns, with Elizabeth, with Kyle, with?
So we do have some uh, members on, on our technical advisor committee. Uh, so we have some school board members. We have some um, just representatives from several of the different uh, towns and, and municipalities throughout the county. Uh, I think the tech is like a, it's like seventeen people. Um, so we had, we had some pretty good engagement at the beginning, um, specifically. And then, you know, we've been just making sure we, we ping them with uh, with any you know, suggestions that we have. Um, the other, we, we did look at the, the Elizabeth um, master plan. So that's not necessarily engagement with the town, but making sure where we've got our eye on what they were kind of hoping for. Um, and, and seeing how we can tie any of their investment into, you know, further kind of regional, more um, more widespread improvements.
And, and also, you know, this is the county transportation master plan. So anything that's in the city limits or town limits of like Elizabeth, Elizabeth has their own plan. So, yep. So we, we haven't had any discussions with town staff with that regard because you know, they have their, their own master plan process. Yep. And so we're focusing on the county roads. Um, you know, through this exercise and obviously every county resident has the ability to um, provide input through the survey and the uh, community outreach process. So even if they are in the city of Elizabeth, you know, they, they would still be a participant in that process and, and you know, members of our tech committee live all over the county as well.
Yeah. And one other thing I'll mention along those same lines is um, we had actually identified some deficiencies on state highway eighty-six. And so it's not included in here as, as projects because it's not really the county's jurisdiction. It's CDOTs. Um, but we are planning on including those deficiencies and, and kind of throwing some support behind improvements to SH eighty-six in the future to address those. Cause I know that's kind of a the, the major thoroughfare through the most populated part of the county here. And we want to make sure that just because it's not a county road, doesn't mean we're not identifying that there should be improvements to that and maybe give CDOT a bit more ammo or give them a kick in the pants to hopefully study some improvements along with that corridor.
Yep. Yeah. And that, that same, that same token kind of goes to the roads on the county line as well. Um, so we're trying to work with the other county um, staff members, uh, trying to make sure we, we coordinate as much as we can. We know that there's a couple of projects that are, that are happening or coming up that, that there is that cross collaboration. Um, but we just need to try to continue to facilitate those, those relationships and, and make sure everybody's benefiting from, from investments.
So could I ask a question? Yeah.
Go ahead, Dan.
Dan, go ahead.
Sure. I have a question because it's kind of personal. It's uh, where I live even. Uh, I'm looking at the squiggly line between thirteen and seventeen road. Uh, Running Brook Estates is shown as a black line and then you have a future roads and purple pay and paving projects, but right now Running Brook uh, Road is serving as a collector. It's a dirt road and we have one thousand, three years ago, we had fourteen hundred vehicles a day during the week. And uh, I see as a squiggly black line between seventeen and thirteen. So what does that squiggly black line mean on your map? And has anybody ever identified it? Because where you have just to the north of it, one fifty-four showing going across the creek will never happen. And to the south, one forty-six, the homeowner's there, uh, one forty-six, well, you want a good, I, oops, what happened?
Did I move, did I move too much?
Oh, I lost my meeting. Yeah. I, I started to move my map and I hit a side button on a mouse and it kind of wiped things out. It, that's anyway, uh, do you see the squiggly little black line that I'm talking about?
Yes. Yep.
It's the only road between one sixty-six and eighty-six that crosses Running, Running Creek. And right now, all the traffic, all the traffic goes to my subdivision. And that squiggly black line, has anybody identified anything there?
So we actually initially had that as a paving project in here. And actually, when we had the same conversation with the technical committee, was that two weeks ago, Kyle?
Something like that, two or, two or three weeks.
Um, they actually told us uh, they would prefer to remove that.
That project will never happen.
True.
And unfortunately that leaves the squiggly little black line, which is my subdivision. They collect a road with no paving and a racetrack, twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. Where they do average on forty to forty-five miles an hour and they run stop lines, uh, stop sign.
Sure. Yeah. No, I mean, difficult uh, property owners are always going to be, always going to, going to hassle our, our desired connections. Um, but yeah, it's just going to come down to, you know, trying to, trying to make everybody happy. Um, you know, I, I think, you know, we can have a, a, a more robust conversation with the county on, you know, if they really do think that, that we need to identify the, the Running Brook Road as, as a pavement or as a paving project. Um, you know, we can definitely revisit that, but um, you know, we, we also do need to remind ourselves that while this is, you know, one, one fifty-four is shown as a, as a high importance or high priority. Just because it's high priority doesn't mean it's, you know, in the next couple of years or even in the next 10 years where, where uh, you know, this map will change probably a dozen times.
Larry Lowman sold the property to the Bells and they're just to the north of me. And uh, they're never going to let any road go through on one fifty-four. And uh, not in your lifetime, certainly not in my lifetime.
Sure, sure. Yeah, we can definitely, we'll definitely bring it back up with the, with the county staff.
See, I mean, it's really nice to thank you. It, it, it looks good as a grid.
Yeah.
Uh, it, it really does. And I would like to see the straight line road because it would take the pressure off the subdivision. I really would love that. But unfortunately, we've been saying, talking to the county for years about it. And uh, it just ain't going to happen. And the sheriff set up uh, and got a few people running the stop signs. But uh, they make more money on Interstate seventy, a different, different priority.
Yeah. So I guess uh, Dan, what would be your preferred project then? Assuming, assuming there's issues with one forty-six and one fifty-four, is there wood paving help? Would, is there another connection you have in mind that we could evaluate in here?
Let's, well, well, what it is, is that if one fifty-four cannot be built, then, and I think that uh, that maybe somebody has to actually talk to the people and see what has happened. And one forty-six, look at, it, it looks like it's feasible, but I, the landowners down there adamantly against going through. And they're not going to develop. So if they don't develop from a planning commission point of view, uh, we can't say point them in the direction of they dedicate some land to us and let us go across the creek. If Running Brook indeed ends up being the only way across Running Creek for four miles to the north and four miles to the south, uh, then I think the county should think about possibly paving it and improving it in, in such a way that it could be acceptable. But when we hit one thousand four hundred cars a day now, one thousand four hundred cars a day counted by the county, then maybe uh, the people are just going to take the road. Uh, all they want to do is get the Parker. You know, that's it.
Yep. When I get to work. Yep.
That's it. And it's, you know, it's, you know, that's damned if you do, damned if you don't. It's like, geez, what are you going to do? It's the only way across. It's like you can't block them.
Yep. Yeah. And it's not like, it's not like seventeen goes, goes all the way up either. They can't just, I mean, they could go south to, to eighty-six, but yeah, their, their choices are, are Running Brook or back west and then north on twenty-one.
They, they don't want to go, they don't want to go south to go back north.
Right. Exactly.
Yeah. Right.
So Dan, just looking at the, the map over here on my other screen, uh, it looks like one fifty comes in kind of just south of the west end of Running Brook. Do you know anything about maybe extending that eastward over to seventeen? That kind of hurts the south end of that, your subdivision there.
Okay, I'm looking. Oh, I see that. Okay. Um, I see, I'm looking at that. Uh, the property owner, I hate to tell you this one, uh, who has got the llama farm right there, right? Where your, where your cursor is right in that area. Well, there's a llama farm to that, it looks like a road. That's his driveway. That's not a road. He comes off the end of Fox Run. And uh, they're very active in the county. That's the Seville family. And Danny Wilcox knows who the Sevilles are. And Danny, you're having lunch, dinner. Time to job. So uh, coming across there, hmm, you got some pretty public, uh, shall I say, political activists living there.
And everyone up and down that road, huh?
Ooh, the, it, it, right there is a little, yeah, I wouldn't mind that coming across there. In fact, I, I would prefer a street road and paved. And then make it peace and quiet because we got horse people in the subdivision. They don't want, actually they don't want it paved in a way. But they want to block it off. They'd love to have it private again and put a barricade up and block it. But the county owns the land now.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Well, we'll circle back with county staff and, and see what they think is the best course of action to kind of make some sort of connection between uh, thirteen and seventeen in that area. But yeah, you know, we initially had Running Brook as a paving project and they said, no, pull it out. We'd rather find some other way around, but it sounds like that might be more difficult than.
It's, it's more difficult than, I, you know, it, it would be a discussion that when I'm there in person, I could tell you all about the people on both sides.
Yeah. Great. I'm sure. I'm sure. Cool. Okay. What else? Anybody else got uh, got some projects?
Danny.
Yeah, I do. Um, when you showed that um, survey that you're coming out with and they could, they could go and highlight a road and then it'd pull up a data sheet on kind of, does that, yes, that right there, does that show your current condition of the road?
It doesn't have that data. No, it doesn't have this like uh, spreadsheet worth of data behind it. No, it's, it's more simple. We don't want to, don't want to throw too much at like the general public.
I was kind of wondering if people, you know, cause what I, I know what, what I thought might be interesting is, you know, you highlight a road and you could kind of get an idea of, okay, is this considered in decent shape? Is it considered, you know, one that's, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah. We're, we're, the hope there is that people kind of trust that we've looked at and have highlighted the ones that aren't in decent shape. And we, and we can definitely, you know, have that as a note, like that, you know, the, the roads that are, that the county feels and that have been identified as uh, to be improved are kind of the roads that are, are in bad shape or have too much traffic or, you know, so that's, that's kind of the underlying assumption behind this project list, uh, so that you, you know, you wouldn't click on, you know, that road and, and, yeah. But uh, uh, at the same time, at the same tune, this is not necessarily maintenance projects, right? There's, there's a whole nother list of just roadways that need to be maintained, whether it's chip, chip seal or crack or, or just graded and re-gravelled. Those projects are not on here. This is, this is the mill and overlay. This is the improved pavement. Yeah, this is all just capital projects, not, not typical maintenance.
Not maintenance pro, okay. That helps. All right.
Yeah. And in one case, in one sense, this is really just like a way to collect votes. And so we'll, you know, by sending this out to the public, they'll review this at the uh, project list and then select that they'd like the improvements that are identified in this map. So we'll collect votes on each segment, which will help prioritize.
Okay. The other thing, we just, I think the county just recently went through a, a study or a, a survey on our bridges.
Yep.
Kind of, and did you incorporate that into this?
Absolutely. Yep. So all of, all of these, all of these dots are bridges um, that were either identified in that project uh, report or that we have found additionally to be uh, you know, one, one lane or, or i- in need of upgrade in some way. Um, so yeah, that's, see, there's.
Yeah, actually in, in the spreadsheet, in the spreadsheet, there is actually a specific uh, metric, Kyle. I think it's in the.
You're right.
So you got a bridge on one sixty-two?
Yeah. So we actually have the uh, that valuation score that was done as part of that project. And if you scroll down, we have all the bridge projects kind of grouped together near the end. Um, we actually have that valuation score included as one of the metrics that get put into the spreadsheet here. So yes, we, we have fully integrated that. That was actually a really good report. It was very helpful information in there.
Uh, good. Good. Okay. All right. You got some more?
Oh, and one thing I just remembered uh, that I didn't bring up, but when we were doing the one seventy-eight uh, the new road in there, talking about that at the last meeting, we had over a hundred people that were between Zoom and in, in this meeting room. And the vast majority of them were talking about the seventeen twenty-one around the one eighty-six and that path to get out of there. And I, I just thought I'd mention that because if you, if you wanted to look at the, the packet and from that meeting and all the people that made their comments, there's a tremendous amount of information about the northwest corner of the county and their, their opinions and feelings on that.
Yep. No, that's very good. That's good comment. And uh, I was, I attended those meetings um, via Zoom. I, I actually have helped the county, worked with the county for probably 12 years um, doing transportation, traffic engineering. And so um, I work with Sean O'Hern, if you know him, um, with inertia. So I'm like his traffic counterpart. So I'm like his traffic counterpart to his civil engineering. Yep. So, so I've been involved in the history of that and, you know, that private development, the applicant that, you know, was in charge of constructing that road. So I do have some of that history, not to the extent that you obviously would, but.
You guys got the, the contract to do the transportation plan through how? It was competitive bid? Was it?
Yep. So it's something that the state of Colorado is funding through the DOLA grants. And so every community does those at a periodic rate. It's, they're done about every 10 years or so. And so Elbert County was due to have an updated plan.
Yes, you were.
And so, you know, obviously Kimblehorn, we've been working with the county for some time. But we did put together a proposal, just the same as anybody else. I think there were maybe four or five different proposals that came into the county. We were evaluated both on qualifications and price. We were the, the least expensive of the group that provided it. Talking with, you know, Rory about it, really overall, you know, he thinks that based upon our understanding of the county, we have a good understanding of the county. So, you know, it matched for us then to continue working with you all with this project. And so that's how we ended up being selected, but we were chosen amongst five or so firms.
Good. Okay. Have you completed these transportation plans for other counties out here?
Yep, other counties, cities, you know, this is something that Kimblehorn does across the country. Kimblehorn, yep, is a national firm. We have 4,500 people across the country. And so we're fairly large, but this is a main component of our practice. I'm a traffic engineer. And then Chris and Kyle are planners. And so collectively, we have several of these going on right now. We're doing this right now for the city of Cheyenne in Wyoming. We're doing a plan in Hastings, Nebraska and others too. Those are two that come to mind. I don't know, Kyle or Chris, if you want to add any.
Yeah. Oh, well, I mean, the other, the other very local one is we're, we're currently subbing for another firm to do Colorado Springs transportation master plan as well.
Are you really? Okay. All right. Good. Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks guys for presenting this. I'm really curious to know, we all know the connections in and out of Elizabeth and, and Parker. Can you speak about the connections to Colorado Springs and to Bennett, those two connections?
Sure. Meaning like how, what, what type of speaking to would you, would you like?
I see that they're purple, so I'm just kind of curious to know what improvements are, are happening on, on that end and also, also on Kiowa Bennett.
Sure. Yeah. So I can actually pull this up. So Kiowa Bennett Road is an overlay and then just a general improvement on the Kiowa Bennett Road and then Albert Road.
Yeah, I think Albert Road was like a, a mill and overlay.
Oh, yep. Another four inch mill and overlay.
And then that Kiowa Creek Road that splits off from that, it might be easier just to flip over to the other map to, yeah.
Oh, yeah. That makes sense. That makes sense, huh? Utilizing what I've got. Yep. So.
Yeah. So that was a paving project on Kiowa Creek and I think that's County Road, what, 86?
If you're talking this.
Over to the west there. Yeah, that old project. Yep, both.
Yeah. That sounds right. 86. Yeah, I think that's right.
Yep. And then, yeah, Kiowa Bennett, Kyle, if you scroll up, I think there were quite a few projects up along that area, some, some new connections, some paving, other improvements.
On your spreadsheet, you had projected costs.
So yeah, that's a, not yet, but we will. So that's the next step.
I saw that in there. I wanted to see the total at the bottom. I wanted to see what it was.
Yep. No, it'll scare you when you see the total.
I know it will. That's why, I, I, and that's why I wanted to see that.
Yeah. And that's why, you know, kind of at the beginning, we were saying that the, the major purpose of this is to give that general prioritization. And, and then from there you start parsing out, here's what's optimal and here's what's feasible, right? You, you, you need to kind of do some value engineering or, or kind of clumping of projects to, to make things happen. And as far as, you know, the, the projections of cost, we will go back and, and the projections of, of funding, we'll go back and, and look at previous funding sources. We'll, we'll look at, you know, what kind of grants we could really, you know, try to put things together for and, and just kind of give a holistic view of costs, tiers of funded projects and potential funding sources for the county to, to pursue to, to get some of these other projects done.
Yep. So if you, Kyle, if you flip over to the process chart. Uh, yeah. So the next couple of steps we're working through here are, we've done some initial forecasts of revenues based off the CIP. And so we're just going to be refining that with county staff to make sure that those revenue projections are kind of in line with what they think they should be. We'll develop planning level costs for each of the projects here. And then like Kyle said, we'll start matching up those planning level costs with the available funding, grouping those into five, about five year groups of projects that we'll call tiers and see what can get done between, you know, the end of the CIP, which is fiscal year 2024 and 2040 or 2045, depending on what we decide here. And then later on this month and in the next month, finalizing our draft plan and bringing that back to you all for the final plan review.
Yeah. The other, the other thing that'll kind of play into, into this next discussion is the, the impact fee discussion and, and report that, that the county's been undertaking for the last few months. You know, we've talked with that, that firm and that team a couple of times and we'll make sure that we pull in any of their recommendations and their thoughts into that fiscal, that fiscally constrained list of projects, you know? I, I think that it's still something obviously that we'll need to take with a grain of salt because it's, it's not a, an approved, you know, action or anything like that, but we do need to, you know, be somewhat hopeful that we'll have money, you know, that that lays out as well.
Your plan review and approval is through the county and the commissioners, correct?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So we'll, we'll come back to you in, in March at some point and ask for your, ask for your blessing and, and move it on to the, to the, the board.
Okay. That was the question. Is it going to come back to the planning commission?
We will. Yep. So we'll be here again. And we've, we've done a introduction to the Board of County Commissioners. Rory actually did that. It wasn't as detailed because, you know, this was a work session for you all in terms of the evaluation. But, you know, obviously involving the planning commission is an important part of this and we value your input and your comments. And so really appreciate everything that you provided for us tonight because collectively, you know, it's your plan. It's Albert County's plan and the input that we get from the citizens and, and, you know, in every way possible, just makes that plan better.
Yeah, I do, I do have a, a sort of homework for, for you all. As we, as we look to release this, uh, this survey to the public, it would be really helpful if you could kind of spur people on to, to provide their input and, you know, do whatever you can to get, you know, maybe people who haven't been involved in this, get their thoughts on some of these projects and, you know, the, you know, a thousand, thousand minds do, do a heck of a lot when you start putting them to things. So, you know, whether it's just general comments on any of the projects or, you know, as simple as that this is my favorite project and, and do it because it's in front of my house. That's, that's normally a very legitimate reason to want a project done is because it impacts me. So, yeah, we'll, we'll definitely hope through you to, to spread the word on, on this next survey.
I was surprised how much feedback you got in the first survey.
Yeah, 300.
That worked well. That was, that was really, there was a lot of, a lot of feedback.
Yeah, that was great.
Yeah, Chris, Chris got envious because I, I had put that one together. I had put that one together and he was putting one together for, was it Cheyenne? Or, or something like that. And after the first week, it had like three times as many people as you guys.
And I got 84 responses or something. They're really slacking up there.
So you can tell that those two are competitive, but Albert County won, so.
Yep, handily.
Quick question for you. I was going to see, are you able to map and, and kind of track where the semi-traffic is? I totally, I kind of see it most on Kiowa Bennett and on Albert. That's kind of what I asked about those two connections. I think that they, what, they go, they, they avoided the weight station on 70 and go around on 86 and then up Kiowa Bennett.
So that's a, it's a really good point that we kind of, I, I at least glossed over. The, the fact that a project is on a truck route is actually a portion of the prioritization here. So knowing that Albert County does not have a, an identified truck route map, we worked with the county to put together a preliminary truck route plan. And let me pull it up.
Part of this process, while Kyle looks for that, is that we are developing a truck route plan that, for the county and that, you know, the county can adopt that if they wish, but it's, it's part of this transportation master plan.
Okay, good.
Yeah. And that, so as I, as it opens up, the PDF opens up, you know, the, the, one of the points that we kind of brought, brought the attention to, oh, and this is the old one. That's fine. This is, this is. One of the points we brought the attention to is, is that you can't enforce, you know, where trucks are if you don't have an identified map of where they're allowed to be, right? So, you know, this, this is a great step towards making sure that, you know, trucks aren't down here doing the loop. What sounds like, you know, down here doing just a circuit of, of truck testing. As well as, as you'd mentioned, making sure that we, we know, you know, we have an anticipated load of, you know, heavier vehicles on given roads. So we can kind of pay attention to them and make sure that they stay up to the quality that we, we want to provide. So yeah, this is the, the preliminary truck route map that we kind of worked through. The, these green lines will be added. I just, I, this is just an older version before we worked through it with the, with the county staff.
Okay, cool. And just like, I think, um, shoulder on Kiowa Bennett Road would go a real long way. So.
Yeah. Trying to think, the, the project we have identified currently is just a general improvement project. We'll get into a little bit more specifics as we look to add cost estimates to these projects. You know, we'll start to ask, okay, what, what improvements are we really looking at? And that'll help us gauge where the cost is. And so, yeah, I think, you know, I believe that some county staff has mentioned shoulders for several roads, you know, and that, that kind of standard also just being needed to be applied to a number of roadways around the county to accommodate larger vehicles, ag vehicles, things like that.
Okay.
Um, you're breaking up just a tiny bit for me. Is it, is anybody else getting?
Yeah, we're, we're not catching it very well at all actually. And I think you're hearing it maybe better.
Okay, okay. I didn't, yeah, I didn't quite catch all that last one. Size of the shoulder? So the typical shoulder is, you know, between two to six feet, depending on the speed of the roadway, depending on the, the number of vehicles and things like that. I don't, we haven't necessarily talked through specifics of, you know, what the standards can or should be. But yeah, that, you know, like a four foot is, is just a, you know, a middle of the road standard for, for a county shoulder. Yep. Yep. Absolutely. Yeah. And, and, you know, just thinking through how we can get projects, you know, and what, what projects look like, particularly the difference between an, an urbanizing project and a, and a rural project. Sometimes it'll be the, the presence of a shoulder, right? Because that shoulder can be used for a number of different things. You know, if it's the only roadway, then maybe a shoulder is really needed so that vehicles can be pulled off to the side. And you, you can have a, you know, kind of an emergency access type need. And then in the urbanizing area, maybe that shoulder is, you know, a little bit more improved and it serves as a, you know, shoulder bike route or something like that. But, you know, those are all kind of specifics, project level specifics that we may or may not get to for all of the projects that we have on the, on the list.
Okay. Awesome. I, I do know that that shoulder also probably would be heavily trafficked by cyclists.
Yep. Yeah. So 825, I, I thought I heard that you guys have some training to do and some, some fun activities to, to undertake. I would hate to get in the way of, in the way of that. But yeah, does anybody have any additional questions, comments, kind of last minute? I saw this on the map and, and want to talk about?
You guys good?
Dan, good?
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm good. Basically, it's just that, uh, looking at some of the wishful thinking on there.
Yeah.
That I don't think it's going to happen.
Sometimes that's all it is. Yep, absolutely. Yeah. But I mean, but if you have, if you have, you know, a list of other thoughts, feel free to, to jot them down on, on one of the maps or, or throw it in an email. We're more than happy to, to take whatever comments you have and, you know, and kind of mull them over or, or talk over with, with the technical committee or, or anything like that. So.
So I'm good, Danny.
Okay, good. All right, Dan. Thank you. Jason, Roger, you guys? Okay.
Yeah, Jason's been a part of the tech committee. He's been great. Yep. So this was all a repeat for him.
I know Jason's email probably more, better than anyone else's because like the first time we sent an email to him, they misspelled Gmail. They did the I in front of the A. And so like every time I get a bounce back that says, this is not a real email and I have to, okay, I'm going to go back and retype, retype it.
Well, thank you very much. We really appreciate your time and, and appreciate this discussion and we'll see you in a couple of months.
All right. Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks guys.
So Peter, what do you think of the photograph behind me?
I actually liked it.
Actually, I took that photograph, Total Eclipse in Nebraska on nine, 2017. That's a corona and you can actually see the magnetic lines of the sun's magnetic field in it.
This, this particular sunspot process is making radio connections great around the world. This, this particular cycle.
So thank you for calling, Peter. But the, the big thing is, is. So, thank you for calling, Peter. Uh but the the big thing is is that I didn't even know this existed.
Yeah, I I didn't see anything that came out on it, so I had sent a question to Christina about it and she sent something back to me. I knew we were having it, but I didn't, I hadn't seen anything on it. And so she sent back a connection to Civic Clerk, which said what what it was. So I think we need to probably get an email out a few days before a meeting. Just, you know, reminding people and see who's gonna come.
Yeah.
We didn't get that with this one.
Yeah, and like I said, I I always get notifications on Civic Clerk because I'm signed up through that. And any meetings you want to be part of, if you sign up on it, you'll get notifications whenever agenda or anything's posted. Um so I thought we had gone through that previously, but uh guess I still have to send out email. Um the other item we had on was um discussion on the planning commission bylaws. Um these current bylaws on the website were approved March eighth, two thousand sixteen. Um obviously, we've gone through revisions to um planning commission. Well, zoning and subdivision regulations, not specifically just planning commission, but we've had a major overhaul in in twenty nineteen of our zoning and subdivision regulations. Um and the current bylaws that are out there reference old regulations that aren't in effect anymore. Um and they have other inaccuracies within them. Um this is part of the packets that is out there. I just went to the website and pulled it up. Um kind of I did a red line version.
I don't see that on Zoom.
So the the full packet had the revised, which is my red line version here, which I I know I may not have caught everything. That's the other reason why we had the discussion to see if there are other things that commissioners have caught that need to be corrected. Or if we have additional discussion, things we want to add or change. Some of the the bigger items here, the first um section two A changes there I tried to make to line up with our current zoning regulations. The existing um bylaws that are out there from twenty sixteen flat out says that the quorum shall be five, but our current regulations say that it's um shall be a majority of the appointed planning commissioners and no less than three. So those that's what those red lines there are to match up with the current zoning regulations. So there's not a dramatic amount of changes I think I have in here other than references to uh wherever it says, you know, part one, section two, I changed to article one point F. Couple little typo things here and there. Some other sections further along that specifically deal with changes to referencing the regulations. Move this along a little bit here. Let's see. Hopefully, whenever it lets me turn off the edits, it'll get rid of that blank space there. So some other formatting stuff to try to make it consistent. Let's see. Clarification that that talking about section, there's a section within the bylaws that says the planning commission member shall participate in annual training as prescribed in part four, section four. Uh and I kept going back to the regulations, trying to look for that. It's actually referring to that within these bylaws. So I added that of these bylaws for clarification. And that might be a discussion too, if we want to change that or leave that. Although we typically do end up with at least a training uh every year. Another, yeah, here's another, a lot of formatting changes to try to make them the same. Um and another correction because there's a reference again to part one, section two, which is the old regulations which were repealed when we adopted the new ones in twenty nineteen. So that reference is being corrected to article um one F seven. Which I included that part of the regulations and the attachments on this item as well. Um it on the packet so that we could be easy reference. Um somehow there was a typo in the ones that are out there and it says Albert City. So there's a correction there of Albert County.
Is it possible to make your screen bigger? Because it's kind of small on my computer. It's not quite readable. Uh for some reason, it's only a portion of the screen for whatever reason.
That's weird. How how's that? Is that better?
Uh well, you made it bigger on your screen, but uh for some reason I got big blanks. It's sort of like looking at a widescreen movie. You got big black bars above, below, and the right side.
Dan, I think that's just how Zoom looks.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Um so like I said, a lot of this stuff I had is more formatting and and little corrections here and there. Um I went ahead like this one here, public hearings or meetings before it just said um held at least once per month. But we do normally have a meeting the first and third Tuesday of each month unless there's no items and then we cancel the meeting. Uh so I have that correction in here as well. Again, a lot of of formatting cleanup. I had to convert this from the PDF to a Word version to format. Uh clarification that each commissioner shall have one vote for each item. Let's see, I'm trying to just look for changes and most of the black lines on the side were areas where I tried to get rid of extra spaces. And whenever I accept the red lines, it that should go away and it should get rid of some of the additional spacing. Um added PC at the end of Elbert County Planning Commission. Move the definition here on meetings uh because it was not in correct alphabetical order. Let's see, I think that's, there's a few more. Um and again, another correction, this is the same thing that I did earlier in the regulation, in the not regulation, in the um first page, section two A, just lining this definition of quorum up with what their current regulations state. And I, yeah, those were the changes that I had. If there's a specific uh section or area that you guys want to look at or discuss further or make some additional changes, please let me know. Um because like I said, these were just some of the the quick, easy cleanup things that I could see when I started going through um what was out there and our current regulations and trying to line those up and and update things.
Is there anything going on?
I don't know if there's been some side discussion.
Okay, because I don't hear anything. Dan, looking through things, just uh I I I don't have it, so I've not seen it.
And if you want, we could always bring this back at another meeting for additional discussion. Um I figured if nothing else, we could put this out here and begin looking at it. Um like I said, the the edits I have right now are really fairly minor. Most of it's clarification, updating, formatting.
Dan, would you like to do that?
Well, it's uh I'll let you guys, you and uh Peter can uh decide on this. I can't see it.
I think we've got other people that aren't here.
Yeah. That probably would like to hear some too.
I got I got one comment.
Okay.
Something that seems really strange to me, under conflict of interest, and something we've never done, but I don't see any reason to do it either. You're talking about, if there's a conflict of of interest, that member shall explain the nature and so on and so on and so on, and she'll leave the room. The commission member may return to the room when the agenda fight given rise to conflict has been disposed of. I see no reason that they have to leave the room. They just can't comment. They can't say anything. But listening to it is something that we need to know and need to be able to have that information on, even if we have a conflict of interest or future reference. I see no reason that we have to leave the room. I think that part of it should be stripped out. It's uh page three, section A.
Thank you.
C.
But is that conflict of interest part in statute? That's what we have to find out. If if that conflict of interest component is in statute, then.
Well, Danny, when we passed this, I was part of it. I remember this. And uh I think with conflict of interest, uh they thought the perception of impropriety just uh just being in the room, uh I I'll make up something, uh you know, brother-in-law to the gravel pit maybe thing or whatever. Uh it's better that the person not even be present and let the board continue on. Uh as there's no influence by even physical presence. That was Dan Rosales' thinking.
Yeah, that could be where you guys, the only thing I'm thinking, Dan, is if if by chance it's listed in statute that if there's a conflict of interest, the individual should leave the room, then you know, if it isn't, then I, you know, whatever. You guys?
It, you know, conflict of interest is, you know, when you have a personal part in it and or a relation.
Oh, yeah, 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 I'm familiar with what.
Yeah, well, they thought it would be just best that they step out until that portion is done. So that's why Dan put it in. Uh another Dan.
Actually, Dan, I do remember the times when we we did have conflicts. We actually uh we actually discussed whether we should stay in the room or not, but I but I do not remember. Where we came.
Yeah, I remember several times that there was a conflict of interest in the last couple of years, but the person never left the room. And you just abstained due to a conflict of interest. And then you just sat there quietly and, you know, let everything else happen. You know, don't make any comments. You don't uh you don't vote. We we have not left the room on any one of those that I remember having. Dan had one that he did. I had one. Uh there's somebody else that did, but uh it's it's something where we just stated it. And then just sat quietly.
And I've seen other places before where they've stated it and gotten down from the the diocese or whatever. They put themselves in the audience or somewhere else until that item is completed. So not necessarily always leaving the room, but just not part of the. Um so but but you're right, Danny. I should double check with Bart to see whether that's part of statute or not.
Yeah, if if that's part of statute, I mean, we really, we can't override it with our with our bylaws, so check that. And then if it's if it is part of statute, then we we've got to leave it in there. Uh if it isn't, then. Yeah. Okay.
So then um if we, do we have additional discussion we want to do or do we want to bring this back?
You know, Christina, I think so. We get a little more input from that are that are on the planning commission. Let's bring it back, could we?
Okay, um. Yes, I can. Um then my other question is, do we just bring it back to the next meeting? Or do you want me to like try to pair it up with the transportation whenever they come back again?
The next meeting.
I'm I'm good with the next meeting. I'm kind of thinking do that because I mean, that's a long time to wait until they come back.
A month, could be a month away, yeah.
Yeah. And then if we could get it, if we could put it on the agenda for the next meeting also to review some of this and maybe more of the group, more of the planning group will be here, so. Okay.
All right.
All right. What else you got?
That was the items I had on the agenda besides election of officers, which we talked about earlier. We don't didn't have enough people here. We're gonna push that down again.
Okay, we'll do that next meeting. We'll try to get that done next meeting. Okay, and I what I wanted to go.
We have three cases um on the sixteenth next planning commission. We have SAC wireless, rock bottom propane and Messer. So we're gonna have a full one. Just uh we might have to push it down to an another one after that.
Well, maybe if we do the next one, because if it if we've got the mess or as you are in the next one, that might take a little time. I don't know about the others. I don't. You know what? What we'll do, Christina, um put it on the agenda. And if we can get to it, we'll get to it. If the other applications take the take the time, we won't.
If it's on the agenda, it can always be tabled.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we could do that.
Sounds like I'm getting feedback. Um so on the next agenda, do we want to move the work session down below public hearing then?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Now, before we go, I'd kind of like to go over for you guys a little bit of the process. I don't know if you've got to speak with anybody, but just go over what our meeting is, kind of what 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 role we play and kind of how we we go about it. So um first of all, a week before, you'll get the applications. You will get them. What they now, different people have received them different ways. Um I go online. I I can access the application and I can look through all the all the paperwork. Everything that's going to be presented to us on and on uh at the meeting. And that's available a week before, correct? Okay, and you you'll be able to go to Civic Clerk. And if you go to the county website, it will, and there's there's buttons at the bottom of your main page and it will say agendas. Click on that. That will take you right to the page. She's she's gonna show you. Yeah.
Do we have a special login for that or?
Nope, you don't need one.
You're saying that we don't have a login to it. We won't get the notifications. Right, Christina?
All right, there we go. Um so there is, you can log into it and sign up to get notifications and it will push it out to you whenever it's posted. Um if not, I've got to make sure I put reminders on there to send out emails to everybody. Um but let me see if I can minimize this down here maybe. So you can see from the Albert County uh dash CO dot gov. Whoop, get off of that. Down here, these little buttons, there's agendas and minutes. You click on that. It brings up. All of these, the top ones are current and upcoming. If you're looking for something that's already happened, you want to go back, they're most recent. But yeah, the one like tonight.
See, I tend to go to that page and check about a week before. I just go and take a look, well, one thing, they send out, most of the time, they send out notifications as to when the meetings are. But about a week before, I'll go and I'll check just to be sure, you know, if I've thought about it. And you can access, and all the paperwork a week before the meeting should be there. Everything in that packet. So there's different, different tabs at the top. You can look at each tab or what I'll, what I tend to do is go to the main tab where you can download the whole packet. See that up in the corner, you got download packet? That's on your first tab and I click on that, that opens it up, that opens it up, the whole, the whole thing. And then I just open it in Adobe and then I have it and I save it and I can, and I can read it. And I've got it and it's easy to read. That's what, one way to access the information you'll be, you'll be reviewing before the meeting. Okay?
And also if you scroll down, you see there's, there's links on different items that are the attachments. So like the.
As you go through there, you can go to the main, you can go to the first page and it'll click and take you to each one. You can do it that way. Or when you download that packet, that will give you everything. That's the whole thing of all those links, that's everything you get.
So you wouldn't have to go back and click.
You wouldn't have to go back and click. You literally, you have a running thing of every, everything that's in that meeting, everything that's highlighted here is all contained in that.
I've been, the page that's up here now, I've been getting that for both the planning commission and the county commissioners for about two months.
So you must have signed up.
So instead of going to the county website, this gets sent to me.
Okay.
I guess it gets sent when it, as soon as it gets published, right?
Yeah, if you're signed up on there, you get a link that shows up in your email that will take you straight to this when you click it. And, and yeah, you can just go to that download packet and get the entire thing all at once.
Okay. So get your packet. And then as a planning commission member, what we do is we then take, we review those packets and we're on what's called a quasi judicial board. Okay? So since we, what that means, we're basing that packet, that material, that application on, we're judging it based on our codes and ordinances that are in place. Okay? It's not that you need to know all the codes because the way the applications are laid out, it will, it will show you as per this part, does it meet such and such? And then it goes to staff believes, you know, based on this, it meets this requirement. It will give you questions and answers kind of through the start of the application as a review so you can see how it complies with currently what's in code. So when you read through the applications that you have, you'll, you'll see where it rates it kind of per category. So that gives you an idea, all right, so it aligns with this part of the code, it aligns with this part of the code. Now, what we normally hear, okay, we, we hear rezones is, is a common thing. You'll get a, a rezone from agriculture to residential agriculture to, to AR, RA. We'll, we'll get a lot of those, we'll get, it seems like we've had quite a few. An individual has 40 acres, wants to split it into four tents. Okay, we'll see, we see quite a few of those. We don't see.
I pulled up one as an example, this was from January 5th and this was one of the rezones that was before us. This is kind of the staff report standard looks like this. As a recommendation, summary, some background information. A little bit of side information and history on the application. Sometimes if there's a lot going on with a property, we may have some detailed existing conditions. We'll have information about referrals and what types of comments we received. Whether there's any impact fees and what those are, if there are any, it'll be laid out here. Review, analysis, evaluation, we have pieces of comp plan. And then we get into the criteria which are laid out in the regulations. So I mean, whenever we have anything before you, we're going to lay out what the criteria are in the regulations and we'll cite where it's from so that you can pull it up and look at yourself if you want or you can dig deeper and try to see if there's anything we've missed. We do try to list everything and, and put a response for everything. Findings and recommendations. Those don't usually change a lot unless there's something peculiar to the case. And then we get.
That's one thing you want to pay attention to and be sure that, that the over county staff has recommended that this application be approved or be forwarded to the board. Okay, you want to be sure that they, because there has been a case or two where the county has, you know, staff has said they don't recommend approval. So that's something you, you want to pay attention to do to see. And then look into why, so.
You always have the ability to modify conditions if you want to. You have the ability to continue something to the next meeting, you have the ability to deny it or approve it. With conditions, you can, you can. Something different than what the CDC has, if you really have a reason for. There's, there's a lot of different things that come into play at that point. When they, they put together the best package that they can. Sometimes we get other information from the community that gives us information that we might put a safety condition on, or we might do something else. There's a lot of things that.
And, okay, and what I want to, I want to be sure of, for the planning commission, we're a volunteer group. Okay, we volunteer our time for the county for, for, as the commissioners that select this, so. What that means is we can do three things for these meetings. Okay, we can recommend approval. We can recommend denial. Or we can recommend approval with maybe conditions. Okay, and what that means essentially is that we're recommending that that, that application go forward with our, our thoughts that we, we would approve it. Okay, we have no authority in approving those, these applications.
Say that again.
All we can do is recommend, okay? And like I said, we are the volunteer group, we are the citizen group reviewing these applications. So the authority for approval comes from the Board of County Commissions.
And the ultimate approval or denial comes from them.
And we, we don't have the authority to, to really make changes either. We can recommend a change and we can recommend a condition. Now, if that condition is accepted at the board, okay, it would be done. But that's, our authority is limited, okay, in scope to what we can do as, as citizens. So just remember still, that's why when, when you're here, you know, that's, that's what you're doing. You, you, like I said, you are a volunteer group, so you can, you take it serious, but the ultimate authority doesn't lie with us, it lies with the board.
All they're doing is, they look at our recommendations and they modify them, change them.
Oh yeah, dude.
Totally the opposite.
Sometimes it's gone to the board, things have been denied. Sometimes it's been done to the board, conditions have changed. So, so just, our role is we look at it, we compare it to the codes, go through like Christina showed, when, go through the application and you can kind of see the things, how it's comparing it.
We give the public an opportunity to come in and make their comments at these meetings. And we've had this room full to deals with people. And we've also had times when there's been maybe one or two.
It's not full to the gills very often, once in a while.
We, we get, we get the community information, add that into our, what we do and send it on up. But it's, it's an opportunity for the public to be heard and make their voices heard. And they then have the opportunity to do that at the Board of County Commissioners.
Now, I'll give you a little bit of input, back to kind of where we started. You, you'll get the application, you can review it, you can review it online. If you want a hard copy, I think you can get a hard copy, you can, I don't know, work with Christina on that. But it's available online and you can view it a week before. Now, a couple of things. Each one of your planning commission meetings, when you attend a meeting, I believe the current pay is $30?
Correct.
Okay. Now, there's a couple of things we are paid for. Each time we attend a meeting, it's, it's $30, attended in person. Okay, if we intended in Zoom, I don't know how that's considered, we still, still pay, right?
Right, there's just no mileage reimbursement.
There's no mileage, and I'm getting to that, that's the next part, is that what people tend to do is if you have an application, I tend to go drive to the site and see it sometimes. If I know the area, if, you know, if it's a, if it's a 40 acre split and I know the place, sometimes I may not go see it. But if you go visit a site to review it, to gain more information for your application, that is reimbursable, you are reimbursable for your mileage. Okay, so you can turn in mileage to go to the, go to the site and review it. You're also open to mileage to and from the meetings. Now, how that works is Teresa from our county staff, she will send us paperwork and then it'll be, it'll be detailed out pretty good and I haven't got to see them yet, but that'll be, it'll be detailed out pretty well. So all you'll end up doing is putting in, you know, how many trips you made or something like that. And then that will calculate out the number of meetings you attended, the mileage you're going to get reimbursed for. And then you just send that back and then the county reimburses you for that. That's, and I don't know how often, is that done on a monthly basis?
Quarterly, I believe.
Quarterly, thank you.
So they'll, they'll Google map your home in here and determine the amount of mileage that you get. And that will be a consistent factor on each one of the meetings. You're going to get a lot of mileage.
So, okay, we've got, so as you go through it, you, that's a little bit of what you do prior to the meeting to get ready to review what's going on. Now, when we get to the meetings, our meetings are run in a, in, in a way, we, we pretty much do them the same. We open the meeting with, you know, a prayer and a pledge, then we'll do a roll call. Be sure that we have a quorum, a quorum is, now our quorum is five since we're, we're backed up to nine members. Okay, so if, if we drop members, then our quorum does go down once we drop two members at a time, I believe is what. So then, once we did, we do a roll call, we determine a quorum. And then what we do is we ask for any different, a lot of times Christina will review stuff that has occurred in the county, applications that have gone before the commissioners. She'll give us an update on what's occurred in the county, what other land applications have gone through, stuff like that. That's a small section. And then we'll go through consent agenda, which to date, I don't believe we've had anything on consent agenda. Then the next step in the meeting is we'll ask for public comment. And public comment is on anything non-related to any application. Hearing none, usually we don't get much, much comment. The next step is then.
Is there a time limit on?
Yes. We ask that people, when they come up to comment, and this is on whether they're commenting prior to the applications or during the applications, we ask that they do a couple of things. We ask, state your name, your address, and then we, we allow three minutes. We try to hold them to three minutes. Now, that gets kind of sketchy because people tend to run over and we, we try not to, you know, but we try to let people speak, but not run. So anyway, so, once we get into, when we open the hearing, then we get into our hearing process and we'll take each application as it comes through, we'll hear the application. The application process is first, our staff will present the application. Then the applicant will present. And then we'll ask for, is, then we'll ask for public comment. They'll get a chance to come up and ask questions.
Just saying in chief.
Yeah. If they use it. If they use it. Sometimes they'll, we'll get comments on some, some big meetings we do, some we don't get any comments at all. After the comments, what we try to do is we listen to all the comments, if, if there are some, take note of them. And then after the public comment is complete, then we may ask staff or the applicant to maybe address some of the comments that were brought up. And I don't know if you, was the last hearing that we had over, it was a design guide amendment for Spring Valley Ranch. There was a lot of comments, a lot of, a lot of concerns, a lot of questions. And what we ended up doing was trying to, took notes of all the questions that people had asked and then we tried to question either the applicant or staff as to if they could try to answer these questions. That's how we try to work it in a meeting so that people get some answers and it, and it's routed through the planning, through the planning commission. So that takes a while. Sometimes if you get a lot of people. Actually, the majority of time, there's not that many. Majority of time, I, like I said, we're looking at, you know, rezones, we're looking at minors, minor subdivisions, which are, which are pretty simple. Very few majors, we don't, we haven't had too many majors. But after we get to the application, after we get through the public comment and then doing that, then our time comes as a planning commission and we get to ask questions. Okay? The applicant or staff. And then once we get our questions answered, that's when we go to a vote. And we vote depending on, it's a majority vote. Usually a roll call vote if we, if I think it's going to be, you know, there may be some yeses and nos. Most of the time we could just do a, a total say aye and it kind of covers them. So, once we complete the applications, then the meeting's over. Now, one thing is, a couple of times we've run into, it's in our, it's in our, it's in our rules that meeting won't go past 11 o'clock and we adhere. So if we're coming up on 11 o'clock, what we've, what we've done in the past is, and we won't run over, but we'll stop the, we'll stop the meeting at 11. And what we tend to do is we will convene the meeting or we will recess the meeting usually until the following night. And then we'll come back the next day, continue the meeting and finish it. That's what we've done the last couple of times. The other option is we can, we can, can adjourn the meeting and then we have to repost it and go back and wait and bring it in and give it another, I believe a two week notice and you have to go through the whole process. That's the reason we don't, if we, if we run up on a time limit, I try to recess and continue it the next night so we get it completed. Because if we don't, it's going to take another over two weeks to bring it back to the planning. Let's see.
Question, question for you, on that 11 o'clock one, do I remember over in the other building? We actually have it to be out and the alarm's set at 11?
Correct. That's I think that's part of the reason why that was approved before is because the alarms at that building are activated at eleven. So if we're trying to leave after that time, they're going to send the alarms off and then the sheriff's office will be out there.
Resting.
We we don't, we don't have that problem here.
No.
No.
Yeah, we can, we can actually stop at eleven here. We have to be out of the building if we're in the other room. And after COVID is over, we may get the chance to go back, who knows?
So that's kind of the whole process in ICHL. Um, at any time, when you're going through these applications, okay, you can truly, it's it's called ex parte communication. If you it's not appropriate, it's actually against the rules to communicate with another planning commission member or to work together on what you're gonna, how you're gonna review an application or how you're gonna judge the application. Okay, you you really shouldn't interact with a planning commission member or other people on how you're so, how you're going to kind of vote on the application or how you feel or whatever.
Example, if you go out to visit a site and you're sitting there looking at it, or maybe with binoculars looking at it, somebody can look up and ask you what you're doing because they're maybe they're the applicant or the landowner or something. And they start asking you questions because they know what you're doing and you're on the planning commission, you cannot take any testimony outside of the meeting. So if they start to ask you questions, just tell them, I can't, I cannot take any testimony outside of the meeting. And if you have some comments, you can come to the meeting. You can't even talk to them about it.
Now, but what you can do, you can always call staff.
Right.
You can get ahold of Christina, you can get ahold of people and or if you do want to get ahold of, or you can, you can call me as a chair and I'll I'll contact staff about it. But it's actually better if you if you have a question about something or not sure about something or concerned, it's best to call Christina or one of the one of the planners over there and and get some input. And that's totally appropriate. Okay? It's that ex parte communication.
Peter, you keep trying to hold up a what?
The zoning and P D regulations.
I think you got it.
Yes.
Did you both guys both get copies?
Yes, my last update was over a year ago.
Which one do you have then?
December of nineteen. December twenty-third is last update stuff.
Okay, because yeah, you should you should have July of twenty twenty. Is that both your zoning and subdivision or?
This is zoning regulations and subdivision regulations, okay. But this will look like I read it through beginning to end a number of times. And when stuff comes up that is related to it, I'll go back and search to make sure that what we're doing agrees with the regulations that we got.
Um, let's see, is there anything else? I think it kind of covered everything, kind of the meeting, the process and, you know, what you're eligible for for as far as reimbursement and you have any questions? You guys good?
The only question I had is, are we starting a new three-year term or are we filling terms that were already going?
Christina, I I thought they're brand new terms, correct?
Um, Roger was replacing David, right?
Well, we got, we got one replacing Kip and one replacing, um, um, Dave Linio.
So you actually pick up their terms.
Oh, you're correct. Yep.
Their terms till it's end.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, Peter, you're right.
And then you get reappointed.
Then you get reappointed.
So Jason, the the planning commissioner you replaced, his term would have ended at the end of this year. So at the end of this year, you'll get reappointed unless you say otherwise, you know, for a full three years. And Rogers', um, Dave Linio's was set to expire, uh, end of next year. So same same thing, when you get to that time, as long as you're wanting to renew, you'll get reappointed for three more years. Or a full three years, I should say.
Yeah. Clear that. That help? Okay. If there's an extension, I think, Dan, I had to send for you. I had to, um, send an email to Chris, I believe, requesting they extend you for a third term?
I think I saw that.
Did you see? I I copied you on it. Yeah, I was hoping, yeah, did you see that?
Okay.
Okay.
And so what's the status eh?
He he extended it. Chris actually contacted me. I wanted to, I wanted to tell you, yeah. I wanted to be sure that you knew that's why we do it because it was required that we send an email requesting it to be you be, you continue it, sir. Okay, that's why that was. Okay?
All right.
So.
Wow.
Yeah. So, any questions?
Uh, just a comment. When Chris appointed me, I told him when he asked me if I was still interested, I am going to be gone for the next two meetings.
That's okay.
Already had a trip planned. Uh, it's possible I can get on Zoom. Uh, we're staying with some other friends, so I don't really want to interfere with what might have to go on. If we're just sitting around, I might get in at least for a while.
Okay, that's hopefully at nine members. I mean, you've got ones. So if you if you're gone, it's okay.
It it's, if you know you're going to be gone, you just have to let them know. So it's an excused absence. It's an unexcused absence is a great throw.
So just tell Christina.
I'm trying to think, does it also say Danny as well, that or chair?
Can you get ahold of Christina?
And you've got, um.
Yeah, do we, do we have your contact information?
Again with the information.
Say it again.
Contact list for all the commissioners.
Yeah.
Uh, what I've got is really old, so we need like a new contact list. So we have to raise emails and contact information.
What I'll do, you want me to send you guys this? I'll send you guys the email to you. You guys are texting?
Do I get it? Get either one.
Okay, Roger, Jason, do I have your contact information? So I'll send you mine. Here. And write it. And then I want to get your email address and I'll send you both.
Okay.
Now, are either one of you guys going to change email addresses or do something different or just use the same ones that I had?
It's it's usually best because you can you can actually be made to provide all the emails relating to this. You know, because they're, you know, as as a public type of thing. So if what I did is I created an email address just for the commission work. So everything I've got in that is nothing but the commission work. If I have to provide all those emails, then I've got it all up under one email address. Everything over there is only related to the commission. So that, to me, made a lot of sense. I don't know if you want to do something like that or not.
Actually.
I may do that. I I may do that. It's a good idea for you to have a separate email due to the Colorado sunshine laws. And they'll, if they ever had a court case, they're going to comb through your email account. So having it separate kind of makes it where the business is in one side and your personal stuff, you may not want to be exposed. Think about that.
So yeah, if you do change, do a separate email, just let me know so I can update the list.
Jason, you're.
You want my phone number?
Phone number?
Yeah. Seven one nine five one zero five one seven eight.
Do you have an email address?
Yeah, uh, Vermillion V E R M I L L I O N Farms F A R M S dot jason at gmail.
Hi, Gmail.
Hi, Gmail.
You know, I think I got you.
She might. I think I've got email. She told me.
Yeah, in fact, I know I do. That's a that's a familiar email address.
It's one, everyone remembers all of us.
Oh, I know where I got it. I do know where I have it. I do have it. Probably the party. Yes, okay, all right. Any other questions? No?
I'm good.
Okay, well, you guys, thank you. We needed help. We need the people. Thank you for stepping up, really.
We get to look at Dan and his stonely clips.
Yeah.
So I have a question for Christina.
All right.
Hey, Christina, uh, can I come in on the eighth and pick up a package for the next meeting?
Eight?
Yeah, that's that would be seven days before the sixteenth.
Then we should have it ready. I've just sent out a whole bunch of email reminder, well, email calendar reminders to keep everybody on target this next one, too.
I just checked my email and somehow I got missed on that. Because just, you know, I came in the meeting a little bit late, but, um, there was no email in my account since four days ago. So if you sent it, I didn't get it.
Do you mean the eighth or do you mean the ninth? Because the eighth is a Monday.
Well, I was going to pick it up on Monday at least, or unless you don't have it, I'll I'll have to come a week ahead. Monday's a good day.
Yeah. Yeah, usually we try to get it one week ahead, which would be the ninth.
All right, I'll pick it up on the ninth. And I do not, I'm looking at it, I do not have any emails from the county for two weeks almost.
The other thing we'll hear once in a while, you guys, I didn't say S Q Rs.
There you go.
S U Rs. An application that doesn't 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 fit.
Especially used.
Especially used by review. Okay, and those, we'll get a few of those. But those are kind of interesting. Sometimes they're kind of unique businesses or something. So, yeah, well, here's some of those, too.
So with the wind farm culture?
Um, I don't believe the wind farm was an S U R. Was it Christina?
Yeah, it should have had an S U R with it.
Should have had an S U R written for it. I, man, I couldn't, I couldn't remember.
Yeah, I think the wind farm had S U R in ten forty-one, if I remember correctly.
Okay, I remember the ten forty-one. Um, events, S U Rs, um, we've heard a few of those.
Did you find the, uh?
We had a reference to the mental.
Ten day before the
illness, um.
Meeting center, the deadline for sending out packets.
Yeah, we had that on the the previous agenda when we were mailing them out.
I mean, that's something if, uh, they saw that deadline in there, then the packets would be at least ready at that point if something needed them.
All right. Well, you ready to adjourn?
Yep.
Hey, I think we've covered just about everything. I I would, I would really like to get this login information to the network. Done so that we actually have something that would work. Because I'd like to get this this laptop set up so that I don't have to take the one from home. My wife can still use this one. Like, I can't set this one up because password isn't working.
How can we find out? Let's just check and be sure we got the right password.
Greg, did you say something?
Yeah, Peter, I I'm going to connect you to Jen Groth and have you get the password from her directly. She's reluctant to give it out. So um, because I have that, she will only give me that do not shit.
I I can hear all that, Greg.
It, well, anyhow, we'll we'll get it sorted out, Peter.
Okay. You guys, thank you.
All right, well, it looks like we're adjourning here for tonight.
Thanks, guys. Christina?
All right, yes.
Yeah, just before you go, I I just looked at it again. It, I haven't had anything from the county for more than two weeks. Did you send out an email?
I'd have to go back to my stuff to look. I need to make sure I've got, I probably have a PC group that needs cleaned up now from some of the people we've had come and go.
Okay.
So I've got email cleanup tomorrow.
All right, we'll send a test message. Tomorrow, tomorrow, or what is this? This is Tuesday. It's Wednesday, or any day this week and I'll let, I'll acknowledge it.
All right.
Anytime.
Okay.
Okay. Hey, thank you so much. Hey, Peter, thank you.
Yeah.
No, you you called me and I was just, I was oblivious to anything happening. Well, I didn't know if you were fell asleep or what. No, I wasn't asleep. I was wide awake. So there you go. No information, that's it. Oh, so thank you.
All righty, see see you later. Bye.
Hey, I'll talk to you later. All right, good night. Thank you, Christina. Good night.